We have a quorum. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. It's about 7:05. The meeting has been properly called to order. I'd like to start this evening with a report out of closed session. Trustee Brown.
At tonight's closed session, the board voted to approve the appointment of the following public employee contracts, which are subject to contractual agreement by the chancellor. Salaries are for informational purposes only and are not voted on by the board. Recommendation to appoint Anita Black as interim dean of academic pathways and student success at Merritt College on a 50 percent of a full-time management assignment effective September 24th, 2014 through November 28th, 2014 at $133,900 annually. Six yes, one absent. If these individuals are present, please stand up so that we can welcome you into your new Mr. President, that concludes the closed session readout for tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Brown. Next item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
A second.
There's a motion by trustee Whitrow, seconded by trustee Riley. Seeing no objections, so ordered. The agenda has been approved as presented. Now we move on to the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the board meeting of September 9th?
Second.
There's a motion by trustee Whitrow, seconded by trustee Galasa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We move on to the next portion of the public meeting this evening, which is public communication. Trustee Brown, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak in public session this evening?
We have speaker cards from several members of the public. Matthew Goldstein, James Blake, Carolyn Van Putten, Dr. Carolyn Van Putten, Tim Bryce, Joseph Bliznet Blansky, and Shirley Kostin.
I'm Matthew Goldstein, president of the Peralta Federation of Teachers.
Just like to remind speakers, you have three minutes.
Thanks. AFT Local 1603. At the last board meeting, PFT announced the filing of a grievance in the decision by Laney College not to rehire two veteran part-time faculty members. Over 70 members of the faculty turned out to support the part-timers in the union's efforts to get them their jobs back. The grievance currently at step one is now with Laney College. And yesterday, PFT met with top administrators from Laney College, and the union now awaits the college president's response, which is due next Wednesday. PFT will keep the board and the public updated. Next, PFT would like to encourage folks to attend a teach-in to be held by the Women's Economic Agenda Project, or WEAP, Saturday, October 4th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Laney College Bistro. Among the speakers are anti-corporate activists Reverend Edward Pinckney and Maureen Taylor of the Michigan Welfare Rights Union. PFT is a cosponsor of the WEAP event, and a couple of years ago, it had the honor of helping to bring Reverend Pinckney and his wife Dorothy to College of Alameda for an event where they came to talk about the situation in Benton Harbor, Michigan, which is a Rust Belt city notorious for being placed under what's called financial martial law. The event at COA was eye-opening, and you can count on the event on October 4th at Laney to be likewise enlightening. Last week, the PFT Executive Council passed a resolution in support of the mission of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, an organization committed to understanding and preventing suicide through research and education. A number of members of the Peralta community have had their lives altered terribly by suicide, and PFT is proud to support efforts to help turn back the 10th leading cause of death in the U.S. Thanks for your time.
Next speaker is Mr. James Blake.
I mean, good afternoon, rather. And I'm glad to be here to really to address a concern that was brought up by trustee Nicky at UN at the last board meeting when talking about the budget, per se. And he talked about the issue of equity amongst colleges and our BAM allocation model. I think it's very important that we understand that this is something that we must accomplish. This is something that we have to make sure that we're providing the full level of support to our students at each college that come under the Peralta umbrella. And that, not to do so, does a huge disservice to the college and the staff and the faculty and administrators when their resources are allocated at a level that will ensure that they can support the students in a proper fashion. There's a number of issues besides equity when it comes to the budget. The other would be the capacity, looking in terms of whether or not we write size to our resources. The other issue is the cost of ownership, and we see that this is challenging from the standpoint of facilities, also IT, and other things that years ago, we never really put on the budget sheet, but yet they're very prominent today because of the aging of our infrastructure here at the Peralta. I feel this essential for Peralta in general and all stakeholders to demonstrate the will to address these daunting challenges. It is my hope that we will accomplish this through transparent and professional deliberation with the mission of student success firmly in focus. I've experienced a lot of situations and challenges where we are not placing our mission before our own personal agendas, and it is very disruptive to us achieving our mission objectives and complying with our accreditation standards. And it's my hope that as we move forward, that we take the focus off of individuals but put the focus on our mission. And to the extent that we are working in alignment with that, then we should agree to disagree, compromise when it's appropriate, and move forward the mission of serving our students. This is something that's been a challenge that I've had since I've been here for five years. I engage in conversations with many of the district administrators on this issue, also on the college level. And it's my hope that Nicky never gives up his efforts to make sure that we are getting equity in terms of fiscal resources distributed amongst colleges. And Nicky, I really thank you personally for continuing that fight, and don't give up, because people are listening and they do hear you. Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Van Putten, and tonight I stand before you as a member of the public, a tenured Peralta faculty member, and an elected department chair, in an effort to inform, if not correct, the public record about the decision not to give two part-time faculty members a teaching assignment at Laney College this semester. Thus far, the public record on this matter has been distorted by the inability of one side of the quote "story" unquote to be fully transparent, because to do so would be a violation of privacy. In the interest of full disclosure, to the extent that is possible, I want to make it known that I am one of the two department chairpersons who participated in making this decision, who co-signed the letter of non-assignment, and to remind you, the trustees, as well as the viewing public, that there are at least two sides to every story. You have only heard what has been claimed as one of those sides. Not only do I stand here to speak for myself and my department chairperson colleague Fred Burgoyne in this matter with his permission, but I also stand here to speak on behalf of the nameless, faceless, unknown, and uncounted students who had a very different experience in their classrooms than the one you've already heard from those selected students who were successful in the stated courses. Most of those students, whose experiences were unpleasant, discouraging, disparaging, or unsupportive, simply chose to withdraw from the course, even though they may have incurred consequences that were detrimental to their academic records or the ability to complete their education as planned. A few of them did what we encourage all students to do when they have an academic concern that involves a faculty member: they spoke to the academic dean. Deans have a unique role with respect to student attentiveness. The information those students shared is only likely to be known to a dean and, by extension, a department chairperson. You've heard patently false accusations that the contract was violated when these decisions were made and communicated. Having participated in one of those decisions, I know that the contract was indeed followed. There is nothing in the contract that prevents or prohibits a dean who has the right of assignment from using all of the available information to decide who to assign and who not to assign to teach a given course. There's nothing in the contract about not using what has been referred to as a quote "form letter" unquote to communicate these decisions. In fact, to be fair, it is better to use the same language to communicate these decisions. Further, all assignment letters are essentially form letters into which is inserted whatever language is specific to the course that is being assigned.
Dr. Van Putten, the first, the three minutes is up. Were you, were any of, there's a note that says that Tim Bryce is ceding his time. Is Mr. Bryce here? Or Joseph Blansky? All right. Continue, Dr. Van.
There is nothing in the contract requiring that the dean and department chairperson be expected to confer with an instructor and his or her PFT representative when there are student achievement issues that could impact that instructor's ability to get a teaching assignment. Here's what is in the contract that pertains to this situation. Quote, "Except as noted in number three below, part-time faculty in the college-preferred hiring pool will be given preference in assignment over part-time faculty in the non-preferred hiring pool. See number four below for specifics." Here's what is stated in number three below. "Exception to rehire preference policy. In the best interests of the college academic program, the division dean and department chair, or academic senate president at Alameda, may elect to hire someone in the non-preferred hiring pool over someone in the preferred hiring pool. If they agree, they will jointly author a letter informing the person in the preferred hiring pool that he/she is not being selected and explaining the reason for this decision. If they disagree, a final decision will be made by the college president, who will author this letter." End of quote. The final statement in this paragraph reads, quote, "Neither the decision nor the letter will be subject to the grievance procedure." End quote. Article 30, section H of the contract. We did exactly that and nothing more. There is nothing in the contract that states what is considered an acceptable reason for the decision, nor is there anything in the contract prohibiting the reason that was given in the letters that were sent to the faculty in question. Speaking of assignments, in the past 13 years of my employment as a Peralta psychology instructor, initially part-time and then full-time, perhaps a handful of part-time instructors were not assigned courses for reasons other than state-imposed limits on course offerings and student enrollment. In fact, with those aforementioned exceptions, the overwhelming majority of hundreds of part-time faculty in what is referred to as the preferred hiring pool have been assigned courses. The situation on which I am making these comments is exceptionally rare and would not have occurred without good reasons. Despite that, my Peralta Federation of Teachers colleagues and spokespeople have chosen to fan the flames of hysteria among our part-time faculty members with half-truths, innuendo, and emotionally-charged rhetoric. Those of my faculty colleagues who are not in the preferred hiring pool would be well-advised to consider the implications of disputing the dean's authority to make decisions of this kind, with an expectation that those who are in the preferred hiring pool should be assigned courses to teach. When does a dean, in consultation with the department chair or program coordinator, get to decide to assign someone who does not have enough semesters of teaching to be in the pool but who has other strengths over someone in the pool without those strengths? It would seem that this could only happen when the PFT agrees with the decision and that your PFT member or other status dues are being used to disadvantage any new blood, so to speak. There's absolutely no reason why a dean and two department chairpersons would knowingly choose to take what is sure to be an unpopular position that only adds grief and distress to our lives without an unassailable rationale for doing so. We all have more important demands on our time and attention than creating hassles for ourselves. Most of those more important demands have to do with establishing and implementing standards and policies regarding student preparation and success, as well as the other nine areas of responsibility that are under the purview of the academic senate and its faculty members. As you well know, there are more than enough challenges in adequately addressing just those areas. We have no need or desire to create or fabricate additional challenges using specious reasons. As a psychology educator, I am keenly aware of the strategies that are used to make false impressions appear true, not the least of which is the power of repetition. If you say something often enough, your story will appear to be valid whether or not it is. If the decision we made is reversed, for reasons that have nothing to do with what is true and right and just, then I will have to resign as department chair. Should that occur, the message from the PFT to me and to other department chairpersons would be, quote, "You only get to make and support recommendations that we agree with." End quote. That constraint is unacceptable to me. It would appear that, in the words of George Orwell, "All animals are equal, but some are more equal than others." Thank you for listening to me and for taking a look at the other side of the story.
We have another speaker, Shirley Kostin.
Actually, Ms. Kostin, I know this is on item number six that you've requested to speak on, or would, you have one for this one also? Okay.
I sent out an email that I would like to read for the public record. I said at last, at the last board meeting that I did not want to enter into an email battle, but here I go. It is ironic that the current and past PFT president and the PFT lawyer told another part-timer in the preferred hire pool, whose hours were reduced a few years back, that 30.8.3 was not subject to the grievance procedure. What has changed to make PFT and its lawyer do an about-face? Does this section of the contract apply to some and not to others? Is PFT fighting for an individual rather than fighting to uphold the contract, which protects all faculty? Please remember that 30.8.3 was placed in the contract for a reason, and that it has been used sparingly over the life of the contract. I wish we could display this much passion about student success, for without students, none of us would have a job. I would like to quote from the Assessment Chronicles of Laney College, Volume 1, Issue 4, "Motivating Students to Learn," by David Mitchell. "Every instructor who has taught more than two weeks has encountered students who lack motivation to participate in class and/or complete required assignments. Why are these students even taking my class?" react to ourselves when students fail to engage or perform. Here, more important, we ask ourselves, what can I do to motivate students to participate more eagerly in my class at all levels? Motivating students can be difficult, but understanding the complexities that underlie motivation can help us create conditions in our classes that will make more of our students eager to learn." End quote. Many of our students come underprepared but with a desire to improve their lives. Let's have more conversations about taking students from where they are to where they want to be. We won't succeed with all students, but I know we can improve the current student success rate. We've been mandated to do so. If we don't, our funding will decrease, and there will be fewer faculty in the Peralta district. And 30.8.3 is not subject to grievance, but it's, I keep hearing that we have a grievance on this issue.
Mr. President, that concludes our speaker cards.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Brown. Next item is associate student government reports. Do we have representatives from our student, associate student governments here tonight?
Good evening, Board of Trustees, all administrators, and members of the public. My name is Shurindeep Singh. I am the student body president for College of Alameda Associate Students, and I'll be giving the report on behalf of my campus today. I'd like to start by saying that College of Alameda Associate Students had a club rush on Wednesday, September 17th, along with a Constitution Day event and a voting registration event on the same day, which was very beautifully done. We created a working student life calendar, which is updated monthly. We have finished planning, we have finished placing our students on shared governance committees, both at the district level and at the College of Alameda level. We have received our final quote for our student center reconstruction, and we hope to implement it as soon as possible. Our hopes are that within the, by the end of the semester, our student center will be completely reconstructed. College of Alameda had its first movie night tonight, which is currently going on. And we had one of our first events related to Latino Heritage Month today, and the festivities will continue on until the middle of October with three more events. We'll be having a spoken word event on September 30th, which we have invited many organizations and clubs to come and speak. It's a free worst event where anybody can speak. It will be both poetry and political statements, along with personal emotional feelings of ASCOA has also created a Facebook group page. The address is facebook.com/groups/ASCOAstudent, which we use to both communicate with our students about events, upcoming events, and all meetings, and we also use this Facebook group to hold our agendas and minutes. We had our first ICC meeting last Friday. We had a great turnout of clubs. The ASCOA has also partnered with the Art Department to put on our art show, which is the first art show that's going to be put on College of Alameda campus in the past, in the last half-decade. Thank you. That was my report, and have a great night.
Hello, trustees, presidents, Chancellor Ortiz. Nice to see you. I'd like to start my report off with, today, we had our club rush event, and tomorrow, we're going to have another day of, oh, I'm sorry. My name is Ray Lopez. I'm the ASLC treasurer. Yet tomorrow, we're going to have another club rush event. We are planning movie night. Our first movie night is projected for October 15th. The movie is still pending, the time's still pending. September is Latin Heritage Month. Last Tuesday, we had a event on September 16th, Fiesta Patria Celebration, celebrating the anniversary of Latin American independence. Wednesday, tomorrow, September 24th, at 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Room D200. We will be having a film screening and discussion on Harvest of Empire. Harvest of Empire addresses the history of U.S. intervention in Latin America and the booming Latino population in the U.S. today. Wednesday, October 8th, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Room D200, we will have another film screening and discussion on Precious Knowledge. Precious Knowledge is a documentary that centers on the banning of Mexican-American studies in Tucson, Arizona. And the last event, oh, no, Monday, October 13th, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., the location is to be determined. It will be a panel on mass detention and accompanying minors. Community advocates, scholars, policymakers who specialize in immigration and mass detention will be there to provide insight on the topic. And the last event will be on Tuesday, October 28th, Day of the Dead Celebration, 12:00 p.m., Aztec dancers Laney Quad, 5:00 p.m., food and gallery opening. Next, we are, we are in the process of planning homecoming. We plan on having a tailgate at the estuary before the game starts and possibly having a homecoming party after the game. And last, we have independent study project, what ASLC has been working on and have been really good at being successful at, and we are getting support from the marketing, photography, graphic arts, journalism, and media communication departments. And this is allowing us to communicate more effectively with students about events and services Laney College has to offer. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other representatives from the associate student government? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is Chancellor's report. Chancellor Ortiz.
Thank you very much, President Guiyang. Good evening, trustees, presidents, staff, and the public audience. I want to share with the trustees, last week, I had an opportunity to attend a summit hosted by the City College of San Francisco that brought federal representatives to their campus. And the Chancellor's office in Sacramento invited all of the CEOs, as well as our security personnel and financial aid personnel, so that we could provide feedback to the federal government regarding regulations that appeared to be obstructionary, our student success efforts. And I want to thank the presidents and Sadiq and Adela for their attendance, and I also want to thank our General Counsel Tweed for preparing a document that was submitted to the federal government that was very cogent and complete with our concerns about federal regulations. I also had an opportunity last week to meet with the newest member of the Board of Governors, Mr. Arnaldo Avalos. He is actually local. He lives in Alameda County. He represents the private sector but has a great empathy for community college students and is very concerned about student success. He and I had a great dialogue about how the Peralta colleges are moving forward with our Peralta Scholars Program, and he's very excited that we are going to be doing big and better things in the next couple of years. And finally, last Saturday, I was, also had the opportunity to attend a summit hosted by Laney College, the Peralta Colleges, and the Alameda County Office of Education with regards to educational opportunities to youth who are formerly incarcerated. We addressed the issue of that population not having educational opportunities. It was a day-long summit at Laney College. I want to thank Dr. Webb for hosting that, and Sheila Jordan, our superintendent of schools, was also the host of that activity. So that's the report of my last week. I do want to remind the students who are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. You talked about the independence of Latin America. I want to remind you that not all Latin America is independent, and you may want to look at the history of Puerto Rico. And with that, I'll pass on to my colleagues.
Any other reports, chancellors, from your staff?
No, we have a president's presentation this afternoon, so we'll wait till that.
Okay, great. We'll move on then to the next item is Board of Trustees' reports. Why don't we start with trustee Riley?
Thanks, President. Just briefly, I wanted to thank the board and the chancellor for supporting the 18th Annual Back-to-School Shoe Giveaway, which we participated with at the, this was held at the, at the Oracle Arena in Coliseum, and there was a great turnout for that, and so there was, the goal was 2,500 shoes to be given out, and, and I think they were all given out. We were a bronze sponsor, and hopefully, next year, we can move up to a silver sponsor. But Chancellor, I'd like to thank you for your support on that. Another item is that on, just past Saturday, at Laney College, there was a, a, it was called Baseball with the Pros. There's a professional, past professional baseball players. They put on a clinic. This is the 28th year, and they, Dr. Webb and her staff was very instrumental in supporting and helped subsidizing much of the activity, so they sent me these, they want, we and helped subsidizing much of the activity, so they sent me these, they want, we wanted me to give you these, these shirts, and so I'm going to just give them to you, and so you get, so it was on the twentieth, and it was, as I said, Baseball with the Pros. So, thank you, and on behalf of Jeffery McEntire and Bert Strain, I thank you very much, and look forward to this program next year. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you. Trustee Riley.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'll start my report with thanking President Guiyang and all the directors that are here for helping me and my fellow student trustee plan the PC retreat, which was held earlier this month. And up until now, I look forward to going to my first Planning and Budgeting Committee this Friday. Other than that, I'm glad that the College of Alameda AS has asked me to help them plan events so far. That concludes my report.
Trustee Brown.
I'd like to echo the Chancellor's, congratulations for Laney College and for the Chancellor on behalf of Peralta for attending that, and participating in his panelists in the Summit on Youth Education and Justice. I had a chance to drop into one of the seminars, and it was great to see how we could coordinate the support in Alameda County for our students. And I also wanted to mention that our Gateway to College program is one of those ways that we can do that, and, and say thank you to the community members that have helped us reach out to bring students into our Gateway to College program, it's very much appreciated. And the participation of our community members that have tried, that have asked for our, us to open up our offices and our time to work with them on providing better services and better outreach to our students.
I want to thank Associate Vice Chancellor Estella and Dr. Webb for inviting me to Laney College to participate in the student leadership training that took place. I enjoyed it very much, and it was a lot of fun, and I had a, a great deal of flashbacks, sitting through a lot of trainings myself when I was in school, if you will. Not the bad kind of flashbacks, but flashbacks nonetheless. It was a great, great to be exposed to so many student leaders that we have at each of the campuses coming together for the purpose of developing their skills, and the information that they received, I think, was very timely, and it's information that I think that the training that they can use, and skills that they've received during the training is something that they can use during their tenure as leaders on campus and, and beyond campus as well. So, thank you, very well done, excellent retreat. Trustee Galasa.
Thank you. This past weekend, I had the pleasure of going to Sacramento for a two-day meeting with the triple CTE, these are the trustees of the state, there's about twenty-three or four of us who gather around a table and hash the major issues and look at legislation and the like. And I just want to touch on a couple of highlights, and perhaps many of you already know this information, but one of them is statewide awareness of problems with CTE, the Career Technical Education, that enrollments are dropping, at least from the state perspective, and there's still the, the problem of properly funding these programs. They cost so much more than the conventional programs, and when you compare it with how they're funded in national, you find that differential funding is pretty much the norm nationally. So, there's interest in this. I understand that the governors allocated another fifty million in the budget for the purpose of beefing up CTE programs, and sixty percent goes, will be distributed equally over the community colleges for retooling and all that sort of necessity, and then forty percent will be shared regionally, depending on certain needs. The big concern is, some of these programs are very important to the businesses, but there's low attendance, it's difficult to make, especially as you move up the ladder to more and more complicated technical programs, and so there's a little, there's some concern, and perhaps a movement to create kind of like regional classes. I'm not sure how the structure would work, but they're very much interested in it. There's a general interest in trying to talk, there's a task force that's been formed. They want to talk to businesses and find out why some of our students are having problems of feeding into the, the needs of the business entities. The other interesting item is auditing classes. There's a new awakening interest in rekindling the old audit. Remember, we dropped those because of the dearth of spaces in the classrooms, they're just what you, and it was a hindrance, in a sense, to the education of the, of the students at large. But now with, you know, student, I mean, lifelong learning just about dead in many community colleges, that this might be a way to begin to satisfy the needs of the older populations and build better bridges to them. And so, they're speculating on different approaches. One of them is just pay the full charge for a course, but this doesn't account for the fact that we don't get FT, the allocation for them, so there's a disincentive there. But the intent is not to take seats away from the students, but to fill seats that are available and useful to the older population. And I think, for those of you who are interested in excellence for trustees programs, I think we have two graduates, graduates here, at least one present tonight. Overall, this is a special program that attempts, we're running off to conferences all the time because it's very, very important, but very, in the past, we never try to coordinate those different courses and to fill in the blanks, things that we need to know and coordinate them in a way that we are amplifying our general understanding of what's happening. That is, we're relating one course to another. This particular program now has a hundred and nine students in it, and twenty-six have graduated, and they expect within the next year or so, fifty-four students are about to graduate, so you're, you're going to have comrades very soon. And there's a, there's a bunch of loafers on the board here, too, that haven't engaged this program yet, but myself included. And then finally, trustee roles in accreditation. There's been a lament, a kind of a universal lament throughout California by trustees, that they're never invited to attend accreditation visits. As a matter of fact, we've seen the records, and it's dismal, there's only a sprinkling of, of a trustee on these accreditation visits, and, and many of you already know, there's concern about a, the fact that the appointments are not made in a logical manner and, and in conformity with the policies of that group. Well, we've sit, wrote a letter to Barbara Bino, telling her of trustee's interests, and we've got a letter back, in effect, that there's not time at this moment to consider that kind of possibility, but they're willing to look at it sometime in the future, and they would try to devise a special training program. I guess the trustee, I mean, this partnership in excellence is not adequate to that particular task, but, and this may be informative for all of you, the ACCJC is going to hold its own statewide conference coming up in just a year, and they're planning on that. So, all of yous, those of you who like to learn more about that whole process, you're going to have a great big chance coming up very shortly. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Galasa. Trustee Gonzalez, you're in.
Thank you very much. It's good to hear the many different ways that we're active as, as board members and community members. I'm mindful that as we serve students and we serve our communities, we have different perspectives about how to do that, and we take different approaches, and so, it all ends up kind of working out because we do take different approaches. One of the things that I've been active on over the last several, several years, as many of you know, has been working on the fight to raise the minimum wage. And this was a movement that was really, in its current incarnation, was sparked by student organizing in the South Bay, twenty-twelve election, and so forth. And I'm just, I'm really happy to point out that, that that movement has really caught on and spread like wildfire over the country, and encompassed some other things. So, for example, the governor just recently signed into law mandatory sick days, three mandatory sick days for workers, which is just this kind of common sense thing, you know, and do you really want sick people serving you food and, and so forth? But in the city of Berkeley, not too long ago, the city council really moved to, to step out on this issue, and starting next Wednesday, the minimum wage in the city of Berkeley will, will begin rising up to twelve fifty-three an hour. That, again, was really sparked by a lot of organizing by students at Berkeley City College and some of my former students down at Deanser College. We're going to be mobilizing this coming Saturday, the twenty-seventh, out of Berkeley City College, to do a worker and community and employee, and employer education program to reach out to workers and let them know the Berkeley minimum wage is, is rising. And it's important for employers to know this, too, so that they comply with the law and make sure that they don't pay these huge fines that they will pay if they, if they step afoul of the law. So, that's this coming Saturday, ten-thirty to two at Berkeley City College, we're pretty excited about it. I think some of you know I'm also a union organizer and activist, I'm on my union's executive committee down at Foothill Deanser, and in that capacity, I work with student interns. We did this kind of incredible project over the last year, as public employees, public workers have come under attack, and particularly on the issue of pensions, have come under attack. We decided, well, can we change the story? Can we change the narrative? What are we talking about? Why are we talking about, you know, bad teachers and teacher tenure and, and lazy workers and employees who have the audacity to want to retire with decent, you know, decent income? And so, we started doing this project where we used social media to interview and film some of our incredible students. We, we have roughly two and a half, two-point-two million students in the state and about fifty thousand faculty members. And so, we just decided we would engage in this project that we call the Stories Project. And we did a series of these videos, just highlighting the dedication of faculty members and the effect that they have on students. I'm really pleased that our chancellor down at Foothill Deanser chose to use this video during our opening days this past week and, and featured that. And it really did change the way, I think, that the conversation started off at the beginning of the year down in, in the district where I work. A lot of times, faculty members will not fight for themselves. You know, they'll, they'll take a hit on the STIRS increase, and they'll say, well, it's just, you know, oh, well, I'll take a salary hit. But when we remind faculty members and staff that it's not just their incomes that are going to be hurt, but it is our ability as an institution to really serve our students, that's when, I think, a lot of times, faculty members then begin to get fire in the belly and, and begin to fight. On our opening days, I was working with our interns, I, as a union organizer, I direct our internship project, and we had interns out on our opening days, and we raised about two thousand dollars from faculty members for our PAC, our Political Action Committee, and we got a lot of faculty members who opened up classrooms for us to go and talk to students about how to engage people. So, that was pretty exciting. And then, I guess the last thing that I'm doing this week as a community college advocate is, classes started, and I have two hundred new students in my Political Science One classes. I hope to turn out two hundred trained community organizers by the end of the quarter, and we'll see what kind of hell we can raise with that group as well. So, that's, that's my report today. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Oliver.
Hello, member of the, members of the public and board and district and college presidents. I'd like to report, early August, I attended a student trustee conference held by the Community College League of California. Learned a lot. One of the things I learned was that although my role is a student trustee, and the first word is as a student, I'm not here to just advocate for students, but also for faculty, staff, and the overall direction of the district. Also, as trustees, that we're not here for how the college and colleges and districts administer policies and procedures, but we're here for the development of those policies. So, I learned a lot at that conference. Thank you, Brenda, for setting that up for me, I really appreciate it. Also, last Friday, the Peralta Student Council, September nineteenth, held its second general session of the semester. We talked a lot about the goals for the year for the Peralta Student Council. Being officially recognized by the district, that's really important to us. Also, we would like, one of the major concerns around the district for students is shared governance and being treated as an equal constituent, constituent group around the college. It's supposed to be faculty, staff, and students being allowed to make recommendations on things that affect their group, so as a trustee, I can't really talk about how that's done, but remind everyone that there are policies in place that, you know, that, that should allow us to participate effectively. It's the student's job to show up to those meetings, but there needs to be a structure in place that allows us to participate effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow.
Pass.
Pass, all right. Thank you very much, trustees, for your reports, appreciate it. We're going to move on to the next item, is District Academic Senate Report. District Academic Senate President Carol M. Piden.
There is no District Academic Senate Report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, we have presentations. Item number six is a budget update. We have a twenty-minute presentation scheduled for, by each of the college presidents this evening, giving us an overview of, I guess it's about five minutes each? All right. Who's going to kick off the show? Dr. Bud.
And good evening, trustees, district office, chancellor, fellow presidents, community members. Yes, I did see someone say twenty minutes. We have twenty minutes total, so each of the presidents, we plan to review briefly our budgets and our goals for this upcoming year in five minutes each. As the president of Berkeley City College, we are just thrilled to be entering a new year and to be serving a wonderful new group of students and to be growing. Each year, we strive to achieve our mission, and you will see, at the next board meeting, we will be bringing our mission to the board for revalidation. We have reviewed it over the past two years and realized that it absolutely does still serve our community with our emphasis of providing our diverse community with educational opportunities that transform lives. We have our vision, and we have values that all tie into serving our community, our, and our students. Our overarching goals at Berkeley City College are advancing students' access, success, and equity, and eradicating the achievement gap. And everything that we do is to achieve those goals, and that's what drives our planning and resource allocation. We develop activities to engage our communities and empower and challenge all current and potential students to succeed. We have a wonderful facility. If any of you have visited the campus recently, you'll see it is virtually bursting at the seams. Our Learning Resource Center is busy virtually from morning until nine, ten o'clock at night. A few of the things that we've done recently that I wanted to highlight for you are certainly achieving our FTES and FTEF targets, working with faculty that are instituting a faculty advising program. We have expanded our learning communities and programs and services, and expanded the Learning Resource Center. And through that Learning Resource Center, we have, as you can read, embedded tutors, writing coaches... writing coaches, expanded the time, have online tutoring. We've expanded to our south campus because our Learning Resource Center is actually filled to the brim. Just a couple of things about, you asked us to give a budget, a budget report, and as we know, about 90% of our budget is in salaries and that is really faculty, staff, and administrators. And the whole goal of the staff is to ensure we're serving our students. Berkeley City College met its targets and productivity and last year, and we look forward to doing that again. As you see at the bottom, our estimated BCC resident FTES will be 3939 for the 1415 year and we expect that our total FTES, that includes our non-resident, to be almost 4,500 FTES. Just showing you a few of our classrooms. And wanted to just talk a little bit about what that growth was last year and what we expect this year. In the 1314 year, we had 330 FTES increase from the previous year as well as an increase in our non-resident. That equates to about $1.5 million that comes to the district extra. And we are thrilled that as the state has allocated growth funds, that we have all been able to serve additional students. And the little green highlights, as you can see, it's a little difficult writing here, but on your documents that are in your Dropbox, it just shows you the exact values of the changes from 12 to 13 with all of the campuses. In addition, we wanted to highlight Berkeley City College has seen about a 21% increase in non-resident enrollment. And it's very interesting, it is split between out-of-state and international. We have a large group of international students, but I think many of our campuses are seeing that students across the country are seeing the incredible value of the community colleges. I know at the sister colleges that have athletics, many of the students are coming and participating and having a wonderful experience and then receiving scholarships. At Berkeley City College, many of the students are coming because they know of our incredible transfer rate and know about our associate degrees for transfers and different programs. We have just a couple of numbers to that. As I mentioned, what our growth was from 1213 to 1314, we estimate that this next year, Berkeley City College will grow about 200 FTES for our resident and 100 for the non-resident. Again, as this is a budget presentation, I wanted to highlight that that turns out to be about 1.6 million additional dollars, which about 900 is for the resident and about over, a little over 700,000 for the non-resident students. You saw this in the great work that our interim vice chancellor Susan Rennie did. This is just a snapshot of the adopted budget from the last presentation. 15,684,256 is Berkeley City College general fund budget. And we do have additional sources of revenue through some fee-based courses, you know, the bookstore commission that gets shared between the college and the ASBCC. We have some facility rentals, not as large as some of the sister colleges, but some nonetheless. All of us receive money in part-time faculty through the parcel tax. Ours is 1.3 million. We have the Peralta Accountability for Student Success. As we know, last spring, Dr. Ortiz allocated to each of the colleges. Berkeley City, 586,000. We do have contract ed. We have some great staff with Francine Lewis that really works well, helping grow that for us. A student center use fee, our total budget of 2.1 for other. And I know you've seen some of this. Again, this is a few of the things that are making up the 586,000 for our Peralta Accountability for Student Success. We have faculty advising, peer mentoring, we have an ambassador alumni program, embedded tutoring. We are really looking forward to developing something similar to Alameda, the Alameda Promise, that wonderful program with internet service and Chromebooks for students that will tie in with the Peralta Scholars Initiative and a Men of Color Initiative, funding library books. We're developing a Veterans Center and DSPS. We actually will have our, an open house for our new Veterans Center on Wednesday, October 8th, from 11 until 2:00. So we welcome all of you to join us. That's in our south campus. And we also are receiving funding for research, additional data analysis, and all of this with the goal of eradicating the achievement gap. I just have to highlight this because we are so proud of the work that our faculty have done over the last several years with our associate degrees for transfer. Many of you may remember, I think it was about four years ago, it was, I want to say it was AB1440, when they said that all the community colleges needed to develop associate degrees for transfer, either an AAT or an AST. We just last week received notice that our Spanish AAT was approved. That brings us up to 13 associate degrees for transfer at Berkeley City College. So when a student takes the 60 units, they, with a 2.0, they get automatic acceptance into one of the CSUs in that major or a similar major, which is a huge, huge deal. And last year, two years ago, we only had about 25 students get that. This last year, over 50, and we're really targeting to have well over 100 this term, this next year, because we see that as a huge area for students to be, have additional access to the four years in institutions. Coming up on the last slide, really, it is all about collaboration with the faculty, staff, and administrators of how we meet our goals, how we've increased our transfer and degrees of completion. Last year, we had 171 students transfer to UCs and 117 to the CSUs. We are absolutely looking to increase that and very importantly, ensuring that it goes across all of our groups so that we have equal access and representation of the students that are transferring. We create a caring environment that empowers students to succeed and ensure that we are fiscally stable by achieving our enrollment targets within funded resources. We've allocated a great deal of the resources to student support through work of the administrative team with peer tutoring, peer mentoring, counseling, learning communities, and assessment. And we really look forward to, on a daily basis, meeting our mission and transforming lives.
Good evening, trustees. Chancellor Ortiz, college presidents, chancellor's office staff, members of the public. I want to share with you tonight some of the activities with regard to College Valameda. I want to put this in context because when I started as interim president last year, there were only two permanent administrators, two permanent managers. We have closed the ranks and we have really solidified the leadership. One of the challenges we had was our enrollment. We didn't make all of our target. We made up a lot of ground, but when we looked at this particular fall, this summer, we were minus 23%. Right now, we are minus 1%, partly due because we, as you see here, we restored a number of classes with the resources that we received out of the 15,523,535, $535 that we've got from Fund One. We also added some late start classes, some weekend classes, and we're offering intercessions online. We found that to be very successful in the spring. One of the things that we know we have to do is begin to analyze the demographic market. We get into this game of desperately improvising and chasing enrollment. We need to get away from that, so we've established an enrollment management task force comprised of individuals across the campus to help us take a look at the market trends, to align course schedules, and to make sure that they're meeting the needs of our local communities. We've gone back to conducting outreach. When we had, when we have resources, we didn't have that kind of partnership with the schools. Those partnerships are beginning to be now implemented and to thrive. With the resources that we've gotten from the district, we're going to be offering an online orientation and we've always offered e-counseling. We were one of the first campuses to pilot that. And with the addition of the PeopleSolve Academic Advising Module that will enhance us so we can meet our enrollment goal for the year of 3940 and with a productivity of 17.5. Taking a look at some of the other ways we manage our resources, we've got two construction issues on tap for this year, building CND. I think most of you are aware of that. You approve the modular units that will be delivered and installed this spring and the faculty will move in to those facilities this summer while construction begins in the fall for CND. The Veterans Center's had some starts and stops, but we're moving forward with that and hoping to start construction soon. We know that a large veteran population will be coming to College of Alameda and we want to make sure that we're prepared. Some of the resources that were provided in last year's budget and this year's budget allows us to hire a veterans counselor and veteran support staff. Other facility improvements, aviation is taking off. That program, as you know, was in hiatus for a number of years. There is now a waiting list of over 60 individuals wanting to get into that program. In Atlanta 860, which we share with Merit in terms of the genomics program through Dr. Siddique, getting that facility up in top shape, particularly in terms of air conditioning and also our library. Some of the other things that we're looking at is advancing our student success and equity and looking at how do we strengthen some of the programs in the past that have been underfunded. Last year, we implemented several successful academies, these orientation programs, courses, and strengthening our transfer programs to enhance transfer. We're also looking at ways to close the Inchieba Gap through the allocation of the past funding. Last semester, we implemented the Brotherhood Program for Men of Color, Alameda Promise, there was a report to this board last year. The learning communities, Open Gate, and the veterans program all form the nucleus of our ed equity efforts. And one of the things that we really are going to be working on this year is how do you coordinate and integrate all of those services? That's a challenge not only at College of Alameda, but all of our campuses. And then also, you may not know that a lot of our faculty are in contact with faculty at the other campuses about how to accelerate the curriculum, how to contextualize the courses to improve student achievement. When you talk about buildings, programs, and distinction, it's really about how do you engage in a disciplined appraisal of the courses or the programs that you have now? So you see our methodology in terms of what we've utilized through our Institutional Effectiveness Committee and our Accreditation Steering Committee. These are very important to not only look at the quality for improving quality of instruction, but to make sure that there's continuous assessment and improvement in terms of those courses. These are just some of the outstanding programs. Couple that are not up there that are emerging is we have a vibrant art program. We also have a very strong ESL program, apparel and design that made a presentation to the board, I think in the spring. I think it was the only program with distinction that got a standing ovation that I can remember. Of course, I haven't been here that long, but it's typical of all the energy that's going into building programs of distinction. Here are some emerging programs initiative that we're working on. A Center for Urban Entrepreneurship with some seed money from the past program, the business department is going to be offering some certificates of proficiency in entrepreneurship. And our populations are not just our typical students, but also individuals in the community and an international population. We hope to launch this spring our Center for Law, Social Justice, and Violence Prevention. Some of this is the, from the proceeds from the past program, but it also builds on the pathway to law school grant that we received. And then some pre-collegiate programs that you see there, the first-year experience, we're going to be looking at our current programs to see how they can be molded into more of an early assessment, early support for some of our students in basic skills and a career readiness academy that we're focusing on in terms of some of our feeder high schools. When you talk about creating a culture of innovation and collaboration, one of the things that was very important for us to do is to take a look at our shared governance. We had a proliferation of committees. So many committees, we didn't have enough people to staff the committees. And that's a typical issue sometimes. So we worked with the senates to streamline that operation and to have more effective reporting relationships. We implemented a staff recognition program this year and we're expanding professional development opportunities. I have to commend ASCOA and also the chancellor in terms of giving us resources for student activities director. Campus life is vibrant at College of Alameda. Last year at this time, we had four chartered organization. Now we have 18 and we're going to be growing that even larger for this coming year. I've expanded the dialogue by putting together what's called a colleagues in conversation, addressing topical issues, and have also established drop-in office hours for the campus. These are the ways that we're engaging and leveraging partners. We're working with the Alameda County WIB through a grant that we just received in terms of regional career center and also with our deputy sector navigator funding position, looking at how we can work throughout the region in terms of strengthening transportation and logistic initiatives. We hope to bring to the board at this next meeting an MOU with base ship and yacht for onsite courses and again, increasing our outreach to our service area and organizations in our communities. We have a special partnership with UC Davis, Cal State East Bay for the pathway to law school and entrepreneurship. So these are some of the things in terms of how the resources are matching the programs on the ground at College of Alameda. Thank you.
Chancellor, Board of Trustees, colleagues and viewing public, it's an honor to follow my colleagues who did a beautiful job representing Berkeley City College and College of Alameda. And I'm certain my college, Merit College, will do likewise. At Laney College, we hold very, very high our vision, which is really about engaging members of the community in ways that ensure that we're all much more responsible leaders and world citizens. And we reduce that down to our mission and our mission is shared among all the colleges. It's really about preparing people for careers, whether it's directly out of Laney College or through a four-year institution, transferring to a college or university of their choice. And at the base of it, we provide foundation skills offerings as part of that three-part mission. And our values we hold very dear, respect, diversity, appreciation, integrity, competence, accountability, innovation, collaboration. All these things that are constantly reiterated by our chancellor because it's really about functioning in this way to ensure that we're functioning with increasing levels of integrity in order to be effective as an institution. This year, we have a lot of things to accomplish at Laney. We've reduced them down to two major agendas, but really it's about leveraging all college resources, all the funds, grants, categorical resources to ensure that we can grow our student success. We spent quite a bit of time this beginning, the end of last year and the beginning of this year, looking at institutional data. It made it very clear that some of our students are performing better than others, meaning that significant number of our students, quite frankly, are not doing as well as they have the capacity to do. So we're all about doing what we find in our research through the Research and Planning Group and other entities, what leads to greater performance at the institutional level. Develop a transformative experience for all of our students. Ensure fundamental changes in our systems and practices. Ensure a culture of high expectations. Foster sustained leadership and ensure the primacy of student success and firmly highlight and champion just that through a collaborative process with our faculty and staff and frequently use data in that regards. I know this is very familiar to our research team led by Dr. Orkin. When we look at our two goals, starting with the student success agenda, it's really consistent with the last four years. It's strengthening, it's leveraging, it's scaling effective practices that are interrupt things that have not worked well and leverage things that are working well at the college, in the district, and elsewhere on behalf of our students. And so we have an agenda that's about what you see there, creating a culture of innovative strategies to meet the expected outcomes, integrate all student success initiatives, the past, the Peralta Accountability for Student Success, the Equity Initiative, the Basic Skills Initiative, our DSPS priorities and plans, our Triple SP priorities. Integrate them all into one document with specific benchmarks and strategies for moving forward to achieve greater levels of students' performance. And to continue to integrate all of the instructional and student support services in a more streamlined way where students can actually feel like they're at an institution that's integrated. And we did that a while back with our deans. No longer do we have just deans of instruction or deans of student services. We have deans of academic and student affairs. That's not minor. It means that they're constantly looking at the big picture and appropriately integrating to move forward with student success. You can see some of the expected outcomes. They're consistent with the district's priorities and they're all about getting students in efficiently through our system, learning, achieving, and out. efficiently through our system, learning, achieving, and out successfully. The strategies is abbreviated list and it's complementary to what you've already heard. We have a completion campaign and it's all about throughout the year encouraging students who have at least forty-five units or above to make certain they take the courses that will allow them to complete their certificates and degrees, graduate this year, and move on to the four-year college or university of their choice. That's significant because in over the last three years, we just took those forty-five students, those students who had forty-five units and above, targeted them, communicated with them, and each year we saw an increase of no less than a hundred students graduating just doing that one small exercise. We were going to leverage our partners. We have over three hundred active partners. We have close to a thousand partners in general who are among business and industries, community-based organizations. I don't know if many members of our listening public are aware that we have over a thousand community-based organizations in Oakland alone. And this district leverages a lot of them in order to be able to carry out our work. Certainly, we're fully implementing all aspects of our student success support program that includes our ongoing online orientation that we've had for some time, but we're ramping and scaling that as well as ensuring that all of our new students end this year with a student ed plan. And then you see some centers of excellence, we're calling them. We just opened up our men's center this year. We're looking to ramp that so that all the males on campus recognize that they're not only valued, our expectation is that they'll be successful. You may notice that there's a trend in higher education, less men attending higher education and less men completing even among those who do attend. And we want to signal, we are signaling that men do matter and your success matter in the same way that we're signaling with the opening of our women's center this semester that women matter. Now, we've got a lot to do to ensure the success of these two areas and that's because it's a great deal of interest among our faculty and staff to be part of that, central to those efforts. Likewise, we're accelerating, we're adding to our efforts that we've already engaged in over the last few years and accelerated learning programs. ESL is a signature example. Rather than do what we've historically done in higher education with English as a second language, adding levels, we're reducing them in order and providing a comprehensive array of support services to students so that rather than take two years, three or four years, potentially even five year for some students to complete their pre-collegiate work, their accelerated pace of what we're offering at Laney now cuts that down in half for many students, if not much more. And then there are other initiatives. So we have a student success agenda. We also have an enrollment growth agenda. Our target this year is for seventy-eight, seventy-four resident FTEs and eighty-four, eighty-nine total FTEs. There's a trend that's happened over at Laney that's not welcoming. And for whatever reason, the enrollments at Laney has dropped significantly. And so we are gearing up efforts with the support of the district with additional funding to re-engage our comprehensive outreach, in-reach, and recruitment efforts and working with the district to enhance the marketing and outreach. There's more details there, but I want to fast forward to the specifics around the budget. Here are some of the strategies and certainly there's a number of strategies that we're engaged in already, but it's important to note how we're doing our schedule and I think it's the public, it's helpful for you to know. Rather than have fall, summer, fall, and spring only, we're looking to add a winter intercession like our College of Alameda and a spring intercession. And we're looking to offer two compressed schedules within a seventeen and a half week schedule, so eight weeks each, allowing students who would otherwise benefit from an accelerated pace of enrollment, like enjoy the quarter system, to be able to take advantage of that within our seventeen and a half week offering. We're hoping that that will be attractive to many individuals who are very prepared for college and interested in getting in and out efficiently so they can transfer and secure career positions. Of course, we're looking to strengthen our collaboration with K through twelve partners. We're very pleased at the partnership between Oakland Unified School District and many of our local school districts with our Chancellor, with this district. And we expect that a significant increase in concurrent enrollment, but also increase in the transfer and the movement of our seniors to Laney and the rest of our college will enhance as a result of that. We're increasing our online presence. Next week, take a look at Laney website. It will be qualitatively different thanks to the input of faculty and staff and it's really about meeting the needs of students in the community. You see other areas there, which include especially working with our partners and we've got quite a number of partners. As you know, which you approved Board of Trustees in support of Laney College, a budget that our District Office of Finance is working very hard, very concertedly to ensure it's fully loaded. And you notice that there's one aspect of our budget that we remain concerned about. And I want to thank our Chancellor publicly for responding to the concerns of Laney. The expenditure gap that we experienced this year going into the year of one point six six one has been lowered to slightly less than a million dollars. Is that correct, Susan Rennie? And that's because the Chancellor directed having some additional funds augment the college's budget this year. That will go a long way in allowing us to meet that student success agenda as well as the enrollment growth agenda. In the meantime, the district is also helping to ensure that we're restored in other key areas and the carryover balances that are due take place. And so our team working very diligently with Susan Rennie and her team to expedite that. And that includes this Fund eighty-two, the student center fees that support our associate students of Laney College. This is an example of the kind of the micro-level work. It's not all the details are not there, but I wanted to give the public and especially you, our Board and Chancellor, a sense of how we just kind of organize out the year. We look in terms of the enrollment management growth. We quantify it in terms of budget. We decide what we need to accomplish. We determine what FTEs we think we can achieve and then we break it down in terms of dollars and then we ask ourselves, do we have the dollars that have been allotted or will be available through some other source in order to achieve it? We do that not only in terms of the enrollment growth, we do that in terms of student success agenda. We've got quite a bit of detail should you want to receive a document that reflects that. And then this compares the previous year to this year, what's missing there because the sheet is quite big will be the FTEs actually achieved and targeted. But you see that we had sufficient funds last year because of salary savings to ultimately deliver on the initial promise, but again, the FTEs that we expected to achieve, we fell short. We're not expecting to fall short this year, however. Strategies and next step. Use of the Laney College, all of our planning documents are critical to informing our fiscal priorities. And ongoing integration of funding resources to meet the needs is critical. I was just talking with my colleague, one of my colleagues, about the fact that the state of California has allocated to our district more money to support our student support services, programs, initiative. And as a result, we're no doubt going to be able to fill some additional gaps that we maintain. And we'll be working with the district to ensure that we have a plan moving forward that the Chancellor can champion that will ensure full implementation of the budget allocation model. Now, the last thing I wanted to highlight is that this activities-based funding model, those of you who are financial experts like our trustee Withrow may be very familiar with this way of organizing budgets. We're moving Laney from a kind of a rollover budget internally to really looking at each major activity of the college, determining the actual cost of those activities. And then as a result, making some strategic decisions about whether all the various activities can be leveraged or implemented at the college and scaled appropriately and then strategically decide a path forward so that as we think about the student success agenda, the enrollment growth agenda, it's actually rendered more practical because of the budget planning. This is a very cursory overview and I'm sorry that it took longer than I anticipated. I hope it's helpful. Thank you very much.
Good evening. And what I hope to do in five minutes, three main objectives that I understood that you were interested in, and that is, you were interested in knowing our college goals, you were interested in knowing our priorities as well as our budget. So I will try to go over that if I can get this to. Thank you. So we started the year, the summer really, and unfortunately, if I could have the Merritt administrators, I see Dr. Sina, Dr. DeRisario, my only two administrators here tonight. Three, Dr. Chavis. Yes. Thank you very much. These three and two others that are not here right now worked this summer as well as August to work with the campus community to establish and align what are our college goals and our priorities. So that meant involving the campus community. And in doing that, we started with the Peralta goals, strategic goals. So you can see how we translated them. And we started with advancing student success. We want to create an environment of exceptional student access.
Dr. Ambesca, please, can I just ask you to stand closer to the mic, please?
Equity.
Thanks.
Yes.
There you go.
All right.
Perfect.
Create an environment, as I mentioned, for exceptional student access, equity and success. In order to engage our partners, we want to do it in a respectful dialogue in order for those partnerships to be fruitful for us. Build programs of distinction. Again, create and implement effective, innovative programs that will meet the diverse needs of our student population. Strengthen accountability, innovation and collaboration. Okay, we're going to do that through collegial governance support, not only at this institution, but also at the district. And develop and manage our resources. Advised, our mission is we're going to develop our human, our personnel within the financial constraints that we have currently at the college. Our college priorities are briefly student services and enrollment management, accreditation, facilities, and professional leadership development. We start with student services enrollment. We are focusing on increasing not only our overall student, but specifically our male student population. We are looking at increasing our weekend and evening support services by offering some hours of services. We're going to design a comprehensive outreach plan because we know that recruiting of our students is ongoing and focusing on the high school concurrent program. We're going to examine the balance, the issue of our thirteen fifty-one. For many of you may not know what that is, and that is our adjunct allocation budget because we want to make sure that those funds are going to classes that our students actually need. And our second priority is accreditation. Again, the quality. We want to make sure that that self-study is going to reflect what we represent, but it is a quality self-study. Increase the learning outcomes assessment, the whole issue of sitting back and evaluating what we're doing. And as we go through this experience, it's very important for us because we're learning how to establish our new priorities for the upcoming year. Increase, again, many of us have been going through accreditation. We want to increase more involvement by having more of ourself involved at other campuses and doing self-studies. So again, a listing of all our personnel, faculty, as well as administrators is going to ACCJC to help with that. Identify the contributions, again, through a collegial governance process through our committees. We honor that and respect that and we want to continue to do that work. Our facilities is one of our most highlighted areas because of the completion. We look forward to the summer, the Barbara Lee Science Allied Health Center. We hope to have it completed as it was designated for this summer. Repair what we have, a fifty-year-old building, not a new building, a fifty-year-old building that unfortunately deferred maintenance has not been attended in a long, long time. So we look forward to finding creative ways on how to persuade others on how to assist us in this venture. Identify potential community partnerships that will bring us revenue to assist us either in deferred maintenance or new buildings, new innovative partnerships. And again, acquire sufficient levels of campus security. Remember, we're up in the hills and when it comes to security issues, especially at night, that's a very important priority for us. And then the training of our college personnel for emergency preparedness, as you just experienced not too far from here, an earthquake. We may, we're right on the line at Merritt. Professional development, again, many of our staff indicated the importance of they themselves wanting to be involved and again, needing that guidance and that assistance, but also wanted to make sure that we all had the norms of understanding what is respectful communication and what is the protocol for communication. And increasing that communication through not only written documents, but assessing what it is that we're providing for students and our programs. And again, being more data-driven. Again, we have a lot of suggestions, ideas, but we'd like to examine the data in order to make decisions. And then leadership training for classified faculty and continued development for administrators. Lastly, your budget. You approved a seventeen million dollar budget. The breakdown was in your budget book, but again, I outlined it here for you again. Other sources, we have other sources that add up to approximately two million dollars, two point two, very similar to the other campuses. And lastly, we also have categorical dollars that come into the college. But I did end it with grants that are expiring. We're known as a college that had many grants, but we're also a college now that has ended many of these grants. Our Title III is ending in five days and our PAC grant ended in June. So you can see the significant dollars that we are now going to lose or have lost already. But we have to find a means of acquiring new dollars through grant writing and new opportunities. So that's all for this evening and I entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for the thorough presentations this evening. I certainly appreciate it and I'm sure the question, the Board certainly has some questions. I'd like to start to my right, trustee Withrow.
Just a brief set of questions and to follow up on what President Gillan talked about. It was a very interesting presentation in terms of general flow. I would hope that the next time though, we can break it down a little like Dr. Webb talked about in terms of the actual allocation of funds in application to various priorities and rather than the general sense so that the Board has and the public, as a matter of fact, has a sense of where we're investing the monies. One of the areas that was touched on just briefly, but without dollars, that's of concern to me and I think other people, and that is the, when you go into a shortage of funds period like we've had for two to three years, things are put off. And deferred maintenance is an area that kind of sends a chill up my back in terms of knowing what it is. In other words, I would hope that at some time in the future, we can have a report that would identify deferred maintenance that is of a critical nature in terms of either safety or any one of the, you know, like correct lighting controls, emergency phone activation, water leaks, repair to electrical infrastructure that was mentioned in the Merritt presentation. We should have a stratification so that we know how much we've got a hole dug here so that we don't, and so we can prioritize the funds that we have that come available to address those needs. And there are And there, in normal circumstances, you'll have maybe five different categories, starting with critical on down to routine. But again, in the future presentations, if we could break it down, and I would like to get the, if we could, sometime before the end of the year, a status of deferred maintenance. Thank you.
So I just wanted to respond briefly that this year, I think, was the first time that we actually got some deferred maintenance funding from the state. I think that's been deferred, actually, the deferred maintenance funds have been deferred for the last six years, at least, if not more. So I'm hopeful that that little item that we got this year will help to start fund that. We know that our deferred maintenance needs are a lot greater than certainly what the state is funding us for. So we definitely need to have a plan in place for that. I did have a question in regards to, and I saw for each of the colleges highlighting the student support services. Specifically, one of the things that I was interested in, and I'm not sure how, where this is housed or where it comes under, but particularly for our foster youth in the district, foster youth who are coming through our system, what sort of services are provided? Do they, where do they, do they come under a particular program? Is there a point person on each of the campuses for those services to be provided to our foster youth that are, have been recently emancipated? If some of the college presidents could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
At Laney, this may be complementary to all the colleges. Laney College, Beyond Emancipation, a partnership with Beyond Emancipation located in Oakland, California. And so we have on-campus a B2B. So it's a program that's part of our Extended Opportunity Programs and Services, EOPS, CalWorks, and CARE. They're all one unit. And so for individuals who aged out of foster care or left foster care, that they were emancipated minor, et cetera, they have entry to Laney College through B2B. And because of the partnership with Beyond Emancipation, we have no less than 30 at any given time, maybe as many as 50 identified foster youth at Laney College. They come during a summer program, it's like a summer bridge, it's intensive, and it is a learning community, so they stay together as a cohort for the year, at least. Many of them are lifelong friends after the experience. I think we've had the B2B partnership thanks to the leadership of faculty, primarily one of my deans, Dean Lewis, and others, for at least the last two years, maybe three And with the program, very quickly, there's housing, there's intensive counseling, there's social services, it's kind of a comprehensive support system.
At College of Alameda, Dean Tony Cook, dean of special programs and grant, is the lead person on the campus. She's also the, over the EOPS and CalWorks program, so a lot of the students come through there. But we also have a bridge with the Alameda Promise Project, too, because once students go through the initial phase of the intake process through EOPS, they're migrated over to the Alameda Promise Program. We also had a scholarship a couple of years ago, and didn't work out that well, but we're going to be reviving it this year for those emancipated youth.
And our, our students do go through the traditional, what we call categorical programs, EOPS, CalWorks. We don't have a designated foster care program, which some institutions, as you've heard, do have specifically. So ours are integrated, because I know I've had individuals come and express their experiences, but they have been routed through the traditional programs.
Great. And I guess at some point, it'd be interesting to know which of those programs are producing, you know, greater success rates for our populations, to figure out which programs actually are really working, and maybe they can be replicated throughout the district and throughout the colleges. Any other questions, colleagues? Trustee Brown.
I have a question regarding the goal to strengthen the collaboration with the K-12 partners. You know, one of the things that's spoken of with much urgency is the high school graduation rate in our region, and as a community college, it's our opportunity to reach out and build that bridge. And I'm wondering how that is being accomplished at our colleges. I know that I had the particularly good opportunity to work with Laney's Gateway to College Program, just volunteering as a community representative with some community members trying to get outreach to support that. And I'm wondering how we're doing on those, because there's such, it's such an urgency in terms of meeting the needs of our own community, but it's also echoed in the state and federal level. And if you could tell me how that is integrating into the budgets and how we're addressing those issues.
Well, certainly at Berkeley City College, we've really developed some wonderful partnerships with the local school districts, with Emory, Berkeley Unified, as well as Albany, and have developed a persista college and a first-year experience with many of the high school students involved right now, with our goal of developing very strong articulation agreements, so that the students complete the coursework, and they'll be ready to step right into college level when they come to Berkeley City College, and even possibly similar to the Gateway to College Program, complete college-level work in high school and come to community college with completed units.
We've had a string of visitations and requests that we now are offering, not only at the Unified School District here in Oakland, but also the charter schools. So we're going and offering, most of them are asking for either African-American Studies classes or Latin American Studies classes, courses that are not traditionally taught in their high school. They want us to go ahead and teach them, so we're continuing the same work like Berkeley is, and that is concurrent enrollment. We were hoping that the dual enrollment bill was going to go through, because that's where we were ready to bounce into that. But now, we still have to, we're somewhat constrained, but we're still doing the partnership and offering it at times available. A lot of the schools are available on Wednesdays, and that's our opening day is to offer the classes on Wednesdays.
And in addition to what has been said already, we're putting a lot of attention in working with the counselors, who are the gateways at many of those institutions. So we're looking at signing MOUs that are a little bit different than just us coming to visit, or what we commonly refer to as kind of drive-by recruitment. We just drop off a bunch of applications and materials, and we keep on going. We're really wanting to have a dialogue with them to talk about how we can be supportive with them. One of the aspects of the Alameda Promise Program is to work with the teachers and our faculty for curriculum alignment. So those conversations will be starting this fall. So really putting a lot more attention and trying to define, what are the needs of the schools, and how can we serve them? How can we leverage the resources of the college? So that when the counselors, the teachers, and others begin to think about their students going on to post-secondary institution, not only are we uppermost in their mind, but we've actually provided some valuable services to them. And then those bridge programs, I think, are also crucial for many of the students, either foster youth or just not really prepared, trying to get them to focus on remedying anything, those skills early on, so they don't have, take so much time to get through. And the last piece I want to mention is really focusing in on career. Many of the students don't have an idea of what they want to do. They don't even know what they want to know. And by at least sharing with them from a career exploration perspective, and then how do you get there, we begin to build what I call conceptual connection about why choose one of our community colleges, and why come, in this case, to College of Alameda. So it's really a different shift in the mindset.
I would just like to highlight something that the chancellor has championed and is leading, thanks to the leadership out of Ed Services with a number of folks. And that is the region-wide effort with our Unified School Districts that includes also our community college partners and others. And that, I think, will make a remarkable difference beyond our local outreach, in-reach, and recruitment efforts. And the superintendents, correct me if I'm wrong, chancellor, are all part of that, and the college presidents of the community colleges. That alone should send a big shift, especially in light of our current new superintendent for local Unified School District, who believes that every youth, without exception, should be required to complete a financial application, independent of his or her trajectory. That will send a big signal and transform things.
One last thing, and that is, we've all been looking at a model called Saturday Academies, which are weekend programs that are designed for students and parents. So we begin to work with the communities as a whole, to get them to think about college, to look at mediating their skills in math and/or English, and also provide some kind of bridge to our institutions. So those are the kinds of things we're looking at. We know they're successful. We've actually implemented them on other places that we've been, and so we want to try to replicate that model within the district.
Trustee Galasa.
I wanted to thank the presidents for their presentations here tonight. It's really refreshing to hear what you guys are doing, what your problems are, your goals, et cetera, and get a kind of a, at least an X-ray vision of what's going on in the campuses. Generally, we are perceived as trustees for a district, and sometimes there's a disconnect with the campuses themselves. So what I'm, I'm wondering, and this is not a request, it's just a wonder, in the past, we have had board meetings at different campuses. I know this is a burden on staff and all, but for board members, it offered a very unique perspective into each of the campuses, and even before meetings, after meetings, we can look at some or actually visit some of the innovations that are going on in the campuses. I think this would be rewarding from our perspective, and also reaffirm that as trustees, we work very closely, and must work very closely with the campuses, because that's where all of our student success or failures are, and we're most interested there. So thank you again for the presentation. And finally, maybe one comment I, at this meeting I referred to, that I was at, I noticed this weekend, I noticed several of the board members reported that they have annual meetings with the major suppliers of students, the major conduits from K-12. And so the boards meet collectively with either the major conduits or representatives from the different, from the different cities that we serve, and then talk collectively about what our relationship with the, the high schools should be, our feeders should be, and what we can do to enhance our own relationships, but more importantly, make really be assured that we're doing our absolute best to get the students here. Amen.
Trustee Oliver.
I'd like to add on to President Guian's question about student support services. I understand that each college offers student service programs like DSPS, EOPS, and CalWorks, where they have, where students have direct access to tutoring and counseling services, and that covers about maybe 10%. I don't know how much it is at each college, but it covers about 10% of the entire student population at each college. But for the 90% of the students who don't have direct access to counseling or tutoring, how much in your college's budget is allocated for tutoring services?
I can respond to that. Actually, we've really grown our tutoring services exponentially, and this year, probably at least $350,000 plus we have for tutoring with math, English, and the embedded tutors. And it is all about having the areas for the students to go get help before they fall behind.
I don't have the specific dollar amount, but if you've had an opportunity, our new learning center was renovated. So you have an extensive math lab, English lab, and then general tutoring area that serves the entire campus, and it's constantly populated with students there. So what we're looking at is to be able to expand hours so they can stay a little longer in the evening. But it is open to the rest of the campus.
I'm going to make sure you receive that dollar figure, but it's got to be close to $1 million, when you consider all the staff, the tutoring, the tutors, et cetera.
I want to get you the exact figures on that, too. But it's around the ballpark of about $325,000. But it also is going to include an allocation from the pass program, too, so that's why I don't have all of those figures. And you talk about, why do we have all of these programs, when, as you know, EOPS has a limit in terms of how many students it can accept? It's precisely one of the reasons why some of these programs, in terms of pass, particularly in terms of Alameda Promise, one stop for those students that may not fit in any of those particular categories. That's a place that they can go to, provide the support for them, and in many cases, have the resources in terms of, in this case, the technology, to be able to help them with their studies. And so we're always looking at ways of making sure that students don't slip through the cracks. But at least at College of Alameda, we have a plethora of programs that supplement and complement the existing programs that we have.
Trustee Gonzalezian.
Thank you. The presentations were really helpful, the varying approaches you took, and showing the way you're thinking about your budgets was also helpful. So thank you for that. I, you know, it's this kind of challenge, figuring out how to mesh four colleges in one district. I've got sort of two sets of questions that are related, but also independent. You know, one of my, my consistent questions has to do with the budget allocation model. And, and, you know, it's this thing that's hard to try to figure out. And I guess the question that I have directly for Dr. Amvis Galadis and President Gravenberg is, as you look at moving forward on this, how do you think about that particular question in your, in your, in your budgets? I know we've got this sort of hold harmless philosophy, where we've said, all right, you know, whatever past inequities we've got, you know, we're going to hold people harmless, and what that means, of course, is that there's ongoing inequity, but the idea is, as we grow, we'll grow out of the, we'll grow out of the inequity. So the question I've got in that regard is, is that something that you as presidents and that your campuses are prepared to live with, that moving forward, Laney and BCC, in fact, are going to get a disproportionately larger share of growth dollars and, and, you know, and so forth? So that's one question. And the second question, and this is really for all of you, and I don't know how do you really respond to this, but I've been raising this issue of the STIRS tidal wave that is, that is going to bear down on us. We see a little trickle of it right now, but next year, we're going to see a hit of 1% in the faculty paychecks, and what is it, about 2%, something like that, in STIRS and so forth. It's going to be a significant, it's going to be a significant problem, and we are setting up our budgets on this sort of growth model where we're thinking, well, we can expand and serve students and so forth. How are you all thinking about this problem, both from a budget perspective, as well as a political perspective? And I don't know if all four of you need to respond to that, but it's been weighing on my mind quite a bit, because I don't see people really talking about this. Scott Lay said, I like, I like Scott, by the way, so I don't mean to pick on him, but when he reported out the budget this year, you know, there was a lot of new money, and a lot of it had to do with equity dollars and success dollars, which is great. Most of the good money went down south, where they're continuing to have robust growth. And his, his conclusion was something like, you know, bottom line, this is a great budget. And I wrote to him immediately, and I said, I don't see a great budget. I see a budget that is setting us up for absolute disastrous failure. How are you all thinking about this? Well, all right, maybe we'll put it over if one or two of you can respond to that, you know.
I think we've been having some very serious conversations lately about your question, and I think we've all resolved that we're going to start with data. We really need to drill down to the facts. A lot of the numbers are, are available, but we really do need to take a look at everything that was just mentioned earlier. I was so pleased to hear differential funding, that the governor, that the state recognizes, that you have programs that have been limited. Our licensing programs require us to have a minimum size at the clinical, our partners say, you will not have more than eight intern nurses out there. So that requires that you triple sometimes our expenditures in certain areas. So then we have to find ways on how to increase and make up for that program's high cost, which, as a former social science dean and instructor, I taught classes with 60 students. And I recognize that part of my commitment was to foster that nursing student. But you cannot But you cannot do that extensively when you have a large quantity. Remember the number that you have. And so you, that's why I said we're drilling down to the information and looking at the costs. So, once we examine those costs, we can also examine the revenue. Because again, if our orientation is to serve our students of our community, that means our resident students versus sometimes other students that choose to come to us. But again, do, what do, who gets prioritized in our enrollment? So there's a lot of questions that are being entertained, and we know that we're not going to solve it right away. It hasn't been solved all these years, but I can genuinely tell you that we're making good strides and good efforts to explore the, the details because you have all the individuals that are interested in arriving at a, at a solution that we're interested, that will benefit everybody. It, equity inequity exists. We just have to find a way on how to make, minimize the consequences.
Your question trustee is haunting in a good way, okay? Because it reminds us of how we as presidents have to focus not only on our individual campus, but the good for the district. And I can tell you, in the course of the last few weeks, we've had some very honest, unselfish kinds of questions and dialogue about how do we provide that equity? How do we respond to the needs of our local communities and then have these competing multiple interests? And so all I can tell you is that the atmosphere is much more highly charged to arrive at something that's much more fair, much more comprehensive, and challenging ourselves. Certainly, you know, I don't want College of Alameda to, to be penalized in every kind, any kind of way. But at the same time, it's incumbent upon me as the leader of that institution to look for solutions for the good of the district. And at the same time, find ways that I can incentivize my campus to not just grow, but to get students out and to also find other revenue. And so some of those revenues, as President Ambaris Galavies has talked about, you know, I was at Merit and we enjoyed a very healthy portfolio of grant programs. But we have to look beyond that. And so we're looking at ways, and for example, in terms of how we can generate revenue ourselves, rather than just always going after grants. So it's going to be a, a collection of all those kinds of strategies. And I don't have a definitive answer, but all I can tell you is that the atmosphere is much different now in terms of all of us wanting to arrive at that solution.
Thank you very much. If there's no other questions from the trustees, we're going to, we have a speaker's card from, I think we have one speaker on this item.
Shirley Coeston. I'm going to be very brief. James Blake stole my speech during the public communications time. So all I have to say is that I'm here to advocate for an equitable budget that's disseminated early in the semester to ensure student success. That's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That was a, a great discussion and presentation. It was more than 20 minutes, but it was entertaining and interesting nonetheless. Thank you very much for your time. The next item is an IT presentation, and that's 15 minutes. Chancellor says he's making a 10.
I'll make it 10.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Ortiz, College Presidents, colleagues, and members of the public. My name is Calvin Madlock, and I'm the Information Technology Associate Vice Chancellor. And I represent a team of professionals who are responsible for the safety, the security, the privacy, the protection, and the integrity of data for administrators, for faculty, for staff, and more importantly, for students. We also service four major business units at the district. That's been programming, networking, telecommunication, so forth and so on. Tonight is part three of a three-part series that we want, a presentation to the board. We will talk a little bit about disruptions in technology at Peralta and also across the state of California. And we're going to emphasize the student financial aid module, technology improvement. The first presentation we did a year in review, and the last presentation we'll do will be later on, which will be called the Information Technology Strategic Plan. I will take trustee Gonzalez's recommendation to make sure we get the technology plan right. Is we are going to need a little more time so we can make sure that faculty are involved and all the constituents that should be involved in the plan. Okay? So tonight, we're just going to talk a little bit about access, equity, success, some of the technology trends that are happening in the California community colleges, talk a little bit about the business service units, a little bit about the strategic plan, and then we'll get into the student financial aid improvement. Access, equity, success. Someone told me, don't take this personal, but it's, it is personal for me because I was that student that was sitting at home when an administrator from a community college came and asked me to attend their school and said that they would love to have me in their school, and I was able to receive financial aid, much needed, from Northwest Mississippi Community Colleges in Mississippi. So I understand the access, equity, and success. So what that mean for technology? We're looking at, we're looking at systems now. We're looking at how can we service our business units in recruitment, in prospects, in admissions, district education, equity, basic skills, CTE, transfer, early alert at risk, and resident enrollment, and also the FTES. So when we're thinking about access, equity, and success from a technology standpoint, we're looking at all these aspects of it, and also success, including the Student Success Act of 2012, which orientation assessment, advising, academic advising, and student educational plan, and graduation success rate. So when we had an IT strategy, we didn't include those Student Success Acts of 2012. We kind of, impromptu, that disruption happened in midstream. So we had to react to that. And just a little bit about this, both of you already know that California community college is pretty unique compared to colleges throughout the United States. They're divided into basically four regions. There's a northern region, there's a, which is a southern region, a central region, and a bay. We, we make up the bay, which are 13 colleges. And the, the southern region is basically about 37 colleges. And the central is about, I believe, nine colleges, and the northern region is about 13 colleges. And the reason I put that up there, because I want to show you some of the trends. I've been doing some studies about what's happening with other community colleges across the state of California. And as you know, there's about, we talk about PeopleSoft. As you know, we heard the news earlier this week that Larry Ellison, CEO of Oracle, stepped down. And since we have such an investment with Oracle, I thought it would be important that I tell you we're concerned also once he stepped down, but apparently he's the chairman of the board now. So next week is Oracle World, and we will be asking the question, what are your future with PeopleSoft? So I don't think that's going to be a big deal, and I thought I would mention it. There are over 700 universities and colleges that are using the PeopleSoft module. There are 180 community colleges that are using the PeopleSoft module. We have 72, 2 community college districts in California. Nine California community college districts are using PeopleSoft. Six California community colleges have PeopleSoft Student Financial Aid Module. They are listed. Sarito's, Glendale, Long Beach City, Maracosta, Palomar, and Peralta. And I don't have Los Rios on there because they do, they did not implement the PeopleSoft Financial Aid Module. We are the first and the only multi-campus community college district that has successfully implemented the student financial aid module. And someone asked me, what do success feel like? And it feels like a disruption, it feels like a journey, it feels bumpy, and it feels painful, but we did it. Some of the other trends that are happening across the state of California, this CCC Apply admissions application. All of the California colleges are using this application. And now we want to use this new CCC Apply application. They call Open CCC Apply. And my understanding is sometimes it takes so long for a student to get admitted to a college. So this will streamline that when we do the new implementation. Instead of taking two hours, in some cases, it would take perhaps less than 20 minutes. So we hope to get that. Zap was a company that was using this. But now it's Open CCC Apply owned by the state of California. Basically, we used to own the data and they own the software. Now according to Open CCC Apply, we own both the data and the software. We should have this implemented by November. Academic advising and student educational plan, basically a snapshot of a student's academic progress, where you can do whatever scenarios. And also we'll have a student educational plan scheduled to be implemented in December 2014. Counseling, some of the SARS, the online appointment scheduling is already completed with, at some of the schools, but that's being implemented, headed by the A and R team and supported by the technology team. We are looking at early alert and some planning to support them in those areas also. And orientation and assessment, we need to look at Compass, some of the placement and testing applications so we can see how we can improve those for some of the business units. And that's what we'll be doing in the future. And these challenges are not only for Peralta, these challenges stem across all the California community colleges. The business units that we service are primarily educational service, which include A and R and financial aid, human resources, which include benefits and human resources and payroll, financing administration, which includes student financials, general services, facilities. We sit in the middle. We also service all, some of the college services. We have oversight of all the technology throughout the colleges. Now we have to develop an information technology strategic plan. What's going to be included in the strategic plan is the IT strategy that was developed in 2012, which is the end of life this year. Will we include that along with updates, make it as current? We'll take out the things that's no longer relevant, and we'll add the projects that are needed. The strategic plan will not only include just the IT strategy, but we have to make sure that it is in sync with the educational master plan. We have to make sure that it includes not only software, but it includes also the hardware and the infrastructure. And one thing about this is I want to also let you know that this past weekend, we completed the network refresh for the district office. That means that all the equipment that was end of life, all the equipment that was beyond end of life, and all the equipment that was end of line has been refreshed. And so now we can maintain it, and that maintenance for that has been absorbed into our budget. So that happened this past weekend. So if you did not see any glitch, then I tell the team how much you appreciate them. Classroom instructional technology should be included as a part of the strategic plan. And we also should make sure that this is aligned with ACCJC accreditation. So that's all that's going to be included in, in the strategic plan, and it may be more. But we talked about deferred maintenance. We have deferred our maintenance also in our software and our hardware, and we catching up now. There's just some big buzzwords. Big data is nothing more than research data, data analytics, some of the things that we need to include in the IT strategic plan. Internet of Things, basically our network, our voice communication. Cloud strategies, we talk about it a lot. SAS stands for Software as a Service. That's basically if we implement our web-based email, well, that's part of the cloud. But we probably won't get into a lot of this infrastructure as a service and platform as a service because when you go there, you got to make sure that you, we have security in wherever these applications are being stored. So we'll talk a little more about that. Mobility is one of the things that we must discuss. We need to develop a mobile strategy. We would need to have, to make sure that students are able to use their mobile device, or faculty, staff, and administrators, and be able to use these on the go. And they're integrated within our information system. So at Oracle World next week, I will be looking at ways to make sure that our PeopleSoft application can include the mobility. And now the student financial aid improvement, comparative statistics. If you notice, these are the statistics I got from interim director of financial aid, Dave Nguyen, where you can see the comparison from College of Alameda, from Berkeley, from Laney, from Merit, as opposed to last year at September the 5th, 2013, compared to this year, September the 5th, 2014. You notice how, how, there's a 95% change improvement, College of Alameda. There's a 87% improvement from Berkeley City College. There's a 104% improvement from Laney, 251% improvement from Merit, grand total of 118% improvement, which means by this time last year, and this is not, these numbers are from last week. So at this point now, these numbers are probably off the charts. We probably have, probably an excessive over 5,000 students that have received their financial aid. And that really makes us feel good that students are getting their financial aid. If you look at it in a different way, you can see how the chart at the top, or the grand total. So if you look at that figure for our grand total, 118%, it will go off the charts, and probably is off the charts if I check with the interim director of financial aid at this point. And then we look at it a different way, just a different way of looking at the data. But the bottom line is we have improved, and now our focus is on our internal processes, making sure we stabilize the system, continue to stabilize the system. And our focus now will be on basically what we call retiring the mainframe or decommissioning the mainframe, and make sure we can take advantage of the savings of over $487,000 per year. And I believe that's 10 minutes.
12 minute, once counting. Thank you so much for that presentation. If we can have the lights, please. Wanted to ask trustees for any questions of Mr. Madlock. All right. Well, thank you so much. I just want to commend, oh, yes, trustee Oliver.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you as a student for the success you had in the past year for the financial aid module and the big number of increase for getting students their financial aid and in a timely manner. It's pretty cool. I remember you guys coming, you sending staff to a council meeting over at Laney last year, talking about the new changes. And we, you know, people, a lot of people had, you know, we had some questions of how that's going to work, and you guys made it happen. So I'd like to thank you as a student, for all students, thank you very much. I do have a question, though. So, so what, what do you think the timeline is for increasing the wireless, the Wi-Fi on all four campuses? I don't, I think it's pretty, you know, I think it needs to be updated. I think everyone's in agreement. You said the mobility piece of technology needs to be increased. So I was wondering, what do you think the timeline is for the actual Wi-Fi part?
Well, thanks for your question, and I thank you for acknowledging that I will let the team know. They'll be happy to hear that. But for Wi-Fi, I can tell you this, I can't tell you the timeline, but what I can tell you is that it is a part of the, the strategic IT strategy. The task force is, one of those items on there is Wi-Fi. The task force is, one of those items on there is Wi-Fi and we have it and we will prioritize it accordingly. And what that mean is probably similar to what we did at the district by refreshing our network infrastructure. The infrastructure at the campuses need to be refreshed also before we can do Wi-Fi properly in the proper way. Because you don't want to put Wi-Fi on top of an old infrastructure. You want to make sure that you clean up your infrastructure or refresh your infrastructure, then you implement Wi-Fi. Otherwise, you're going to have a whole series of other problems. So I can tell you, it's on the radar. I don't know who the student representative, but I will make sure that that student representative report to you as a board, student trustee and keep you up to date on where we are with that in terms of prioritization. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much and congratulations once again. I speak for myself, but I'm sure the sentiments of the board are carried in this. I haven't gotten any complaints about financial aid this semester, which I think is a testament to the work of your shop and your team. And, and thank you for making this a reality. I know it's something that I've been pushing for the last seven years that I've been on the board and to actually see it happen, that students actually have their financial aid in time for the semester means a lot, not only for pocketbooks, but also for their success. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Just had a quick question. Thank you for your presentation. And my question is, when we come to this period of inputting grades, getting grades out to students, and when the faculty is working with the system that we have, how will that integration flow? In other words, are you perceiving that we've got it, we've got everything nailed down so that at the close of this academic semester, this fall, that we'll be able to get those grade reports and the information ready for students and for the faculty?
So the grade reports during the, at graduation time, you mean, or just?
Well, actually, I mean semester by semester, but of course, at the end of graduation time, that's a very, that's when we have to have those transcripts ready. But I'm wondering, our first, our first pass at the academic semester, the fall semester, how are we going to do? If you have a projection?
I project that we're going to do well, and let me tell you why. I know there's a lot of things we don't report on, but I know internally we have cleaned up data that dates back to when we first implemented. So that continuous improvement is going on constantly. So I know that the associate vice chancellor Adella and her team have been working with IT and we are constantly cleaning up data. And I think most of it's cleaned up now, so I think the outlook looks great. I don't, I don't see, I don't foresee any real challenges. And at this point, we've got over the hump of this system. I think now we can focus on now those type of things and making sure that that flows smoothly the way you expect it to.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next up is environmental sustainability presentation, associate vice chancellor Caro and Mr. Charles Neal. While Dr. Caro's getting set up, I'd like to ask the board to actually, we'd like to, without objection, move item number 15 and 16 to, to actually postpone items number 15 and 16 for the next agenda at the request of a trustee. If there's no objection, I'd like to remove items number 15 and 16 to, to our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Any objections?
Mr. President, just for the record and for the public, could you read those items?
Item number 15 is consider approval of a one-year contract in the amount of $210,000 with the College and Career Academy Support Network for the provision of technical assistance to the East Bay Career Pathways Consortium, for which the Peralta Community College District is the fiscal agent. That's number 15. And number 16 is consider approval of a one-year contract in the amount of $330,000 with the Career Ladders Project for the provision of technical assistance to the East Bay Career Pathways Consortium, for which Peralta Community College District is the fiscal agent. Seeing none, so ordered.
Good evening, Board President. Members of the governing board of trustees, chancellor, college presidents, my colleagues, and members of the public. This evening, I'm going to be presenting the sustainability progress report, say, for the past one year. What we tend to do is to come before the board and to the stakeholders to let you know how we are doing regarding sustainability. Now, when we talk about sustainability, we are looking at three major areas or four major areas. One has to do with energy, whether the energy we're talking about is electricity or gas. I want to look at water use and waste management. Those are the various categories that I'm going to be speaking about this evening. And one of the, one of the goals that we want to achieve or that we are pursuing is to ensure that we are making progress every year to be able to see that our facilities that we utilize for education are provided in an environment that is ecologically sound for teaching and learning and that is also conducive for our workers to come work every day. But the overall goal too is to be able to reduce our carbon footprint through the sustainability. Now, what did we do this past year? So there are about 10 items here. This list is not exhaustive, but it's a summary of some of what is going on or work in progress. During this past year, due to Prop 39 bond that we received about $650,000, we were able to do all the outside lighting throughout the three colleges that have campuses and we were able to reduce the lighting to LED. What this means is that you have lights that is going to burn less, but be able to emit more and be able to sustain for a prolonged period of time, over 10 years. Then we have water consumption. We have been able to reduce water use throughout the colleges. We did this by turning off the water about four days in a week. There's no water supplies for our lawns. And then we have other measures for restrooms to reduce our water consumption. Then waste generation has been achieved by doing various type of waste management techniques to make this happen. Then there has been reduction in the gas use. And then we also have, every year we have a festival that we hold at Laney College, where we have over 70 vendors that comes to participate and increase both the education and infrastructure on energy reduction. Then we have some buildings that are under construction or being planned to be constructed, of which one of them is the Barbara Lee Allied Science Center over at Merritt College. The building itself is going to be lead gold. So both the MEP, both the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing have been designed in a way to have a sustainable gold. We have also begun the implementation of electrical charging stations. So what this means is that individuals in our community who want to charge their vehicles, both staff, faculty, students in our community here are able to charge their vehicles here in the district. And members of the public also can come into the district to be able to charge the fast chargers that has been installed here in the district administrative center. And that construction work is ongoing at the colleges at this time. Then there has been some lecture series that are held during the Sustainable Festival Week that addresses sustainability, both in our community and nationwide. Then you also have the Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Green Program that is going on at Laney College. One of the items that we did not include here, but that is very important, is to see how we can be able to reduce our energy costs so that we can pull the money back in the classroom. When you use that terminology, other folks looked at it, how, how does sustainability help the classrooms? Now, between 82 to 85% of the district budget is on overhead, like salaries, that we pay out to staff, faculty, and the amount of discretionary fund that is available to the district becomes limited. So one of the ways by which we can fund or spend some of the money in the classroom is sustainability, meaning that if you reduce the energy use, then some of that fund can go into the classrooms. This past summer, the governing board of trustees and the chancellor made available about $1 million that came out from energy credits, from the solar energy credit that we've had over the years. And we use this to augment the budget to be able to fix about 38 leaks that we are going on in classrooms at Laney College, so that we have an environment that is conducive for learning. That is how some of these dollars translate to classrooms. Now, moving fast ahead, this is what our energy costs and the kilowatt per hour has been since 2008. If you look at this data, there are two things that are glaring. One, by 2008, we used to have about $591,000 at cost and our kilowatt per hour was lower. Between 2010 and 2011, there was growth in terms of kilowatt hours and the cost for energy. One might ask, why, why was this phenomenon? And the reason primarily was that the district started implementing the Measure A and Measure E energy construction activities throughout the colleges. Over 200, over 200 projects were completed during this time that required the use of more energy in all the schools. So even while we are putting measures that could be able to reduce energy down, but because we are expanding programs and building modernizations that increased our energy use during that period. Now, as we begin to have more solar in our roofs and other activities, you can see that the numbers are beginning to go down. So therefore, we're using 2012 as our base year. So when you look at the numbers between 2012 and 13, we see that the average growth that we had during this period in terms of kilowatt hours was about 2.5%. So we need to do more to be able to reduce these numbers so that we use less energy and be able to have the funding go to classrooms. Now, if you look at the natural gas that we are utilizing, it's the same type of story in terms of cost, but the overall use between 2012 and 13 of gas usage has gone down. That was in terms of planning and reduction of how much natural gas we are using. But however, the cost of gasoline in the energy market did go up in 2013 despite the fact that our usage went down. So therefore, we're going to continue to make plans to be able to reduce our gas use. And how are we going to do that? We're going to look at programs like cogeneration that will be able to be utilized as a substitute for natural gas in our facilities. Then in terms of, in terms of waste, I want to be able to divert more recycling programs so that we don't go send this to the landfills. Our initial goal is to go to 50% so that half of all the waste that we generate, 50% of it is diverted and it doesn't go to landfills. So this is one of the goals we want to achieve, to keep reducing the amount of, amount of waste that gets sent to the landfills. Now, in terms of waste management, these are the numbers that we have. And as you can see, you see that we are doing quite a bit of recycling, but the landfills quantity increased between 2011 and 2012. And that was due to some construction where some items could not be reused, but we are making effort that all construction that we do, that all the reusable materials, we have to be recycled and be used as part of that construction as opposed to sending it to the landfill. Now, in terms of water consumptions, there are, there is an increase in 2012. That increase has been reduced, given the steps that we are taking to be able to ensure that that is being done. I'm going to enumerate as I go on on this presentation to show you how we're doing that. Now, because we are not utilizing water every day as we used to do, a lot of our lawns, when you look around, is now brown. So that is why we have some of these signs that have been posted in various areas. Some of them are being made that brown is the new green. And we are also saying to eat that we have the bow tabs, there's water dispensers that we are utilizing in the district offices, in selected offices, and we are extending this to Laney College right now so that we can be able to use the potable water that we have in our water board dispensers as opposed to buying waters from other companies. The energy that it takes to deliver bottled water throughout the whole colleges could be reserved in terms of carbon footprint if we can be able to utilize the dispensers that we are providing side by side right now. We conducted the 30-day satisfaction guarantee and a lot of feedback that we got from that survey is that individuals who want to be able to use that dispensers. It's good water and it's fresh and we can be able to reduce buying bottled water instead of using this, we rather use these dispensers as opposed to bottled water. Then we're using irrigation waters also. We have two things that are going on. At Laney College, we have gray water that we're using for landfills and we're using this for the lawns and the fields. But at College of Alameda and Merritt, we are still using potable water. So the plan is to be able to dig some wells over in Alameda and Merritt College so that we can be able to utilize the underground water as opposed to the potable water that we currently using. In, in the College of Alameda, there are two issues. One has to do with the plume, the underground plume that is in the area from 1897 leakage of a refinery that used to be in the area. And also, there's also salt in the water at Alameda that we involve the process of desalination. These two factors have been taken into consideration as we are making effort to look for alternative source of water. So these are the connections, these are the new water dispensers that we're utilizing now in some of these offices. And we want to extend this to all the colleges as a substitute to bottled water. At the urinals, we find out here in the district main restrooms that we're able to save 1,075 gallons per urinal per month. So these bow tabs are placed in every main urinal to be able to dance some of the odor and they will reduce the volume of water that can be flushed through this area, about one-fourth of the amount of water that we used to use. So as this program is being reviewed, we want to expand this to all the other colleges to reduce the amount of water that is flushed down the drain. Now, with proposition 39, as I said, we've got 659,000 and then we utilize that to do outside the LED lighting. In this school year, we have about 505,000 from Prop 39. And we're looking forward to using this to do monetary based commissioning and then look at other various programs that can help reduce energy. The LED lighting fixtures work has been complete. We have photocells that are attached there and these photocells are like alternative to our delta systems. So if the delta system is not working fine- So if the delta system is not working fine, then you have the photocell acting as a substitute. I want to also state that during the construction of this project, about eight local jobs were generated, of which one of them was an apprentice program. So that as we continue to utilize a label, PLA, to be able to undertake these projects, we are able to hire local individuals to help us in the construction. Now, there are some, there are some grants that have been able to help us to do the electrical chargers. One of them is the California Energy Commission that we are utilizing for this charging station that has been installed, where employees of the district and the colleges can be able to park their vehicle and help reduce carbon footprint by utilizing electric vehicles and being able to get sufficient charge when they go home. This is the fast charger that is also being funded through this process, and for about thirty minutes, you are able to get about eighty percent charge on your vehicles. And this has been installed here in the district office, and we're going to do this throughout the colleges. These are the buildings that have either been constructed and they have endling gold or silver, or they are in the process of construction. As you can see, we have Berkeley City College Silver Certification. That was the first building in the city of Berkeley to attain that. Now, we have platinum building coming up at Lenny College that is called the Best Center. That has the highest grade of platinum, or what you might call passive house, which is a German standard. These are the buildings, and then these are the educational programs that benefit from this. These are sustainable classes that we have done during the Sustainability Week at Lenny And these were the topics and the professors who helped teach some of those classes during the period. So for the future, we want to be able to look at how there are also gardens that have been created, both at Lenny College and College of Alameda, for fresh produce and bicycle racks, to reduce transportation issues. So for the future, these are the areas that we tend to look at to continue to reduce energy use, transportation demands, and also irrigation purposes. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, and this is the construction that goes on to bring all of these processes about. And I think I recognize the trustee in that picture.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Icaro, for that presentation. Trustees, any question for the Vice Chancellor or Mr. Neal? Trustee Gonzalez-Gian.
Thank you, Siddiq, for that presentation and for the ongoing work, and this isn't so much a question for you, it's just to point out that we have some unfinished business at the board level. You know, we passed a resolution quite some time ago about divesting our carbon-related stocks. I think we've had an analysis done that was done by our former Vice Chancellor of Finance, Ron Gerhart, and we're really just waiting for the Investment Board to take action on that, and I'm hoping that that can, I'm hoping that that can move forward expeditiously. Thank you.
On that note, I just wanted to point out that the Rockefeller Foundation, who made their fortunes on oil, actually just voted to divest from their assets, any investments in carbon fuels. So I think that's moving in the positive direction, and hopefully, our board will take action soon. Trustee Brown.
I have a quick question. I'll make this really quick. Two things. One is, I understand that Alameda County's goal for, for a solid waste diversion away from landfill is fifty percent, and I noticed that we had a fifty-three percent diversion, or we had, well, actually fifty-three percent still going to landfill. I just wanted to know if that was, if we're still on target for, for our fifty percent diversion, and then the extent to which we're using energy commissioning of our older buildings to find out where the improvements are. And I think it was a very comprehensive, complete, detailed presentation. I thought it was great.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, we are on course to be able to make this fifty percent, and the areas where we need to pick up speeds is in our construction, whereby some of the materials that we are using, like bricks, is granted and be used on the same project, rather than sending quite a bit of it to the landfill.
Is that in our contracts, though? I mean, they, they can work that out.
No, this is, this is not with, with the solid waste management. This is an internal process of how we utilize waste and how we deal with it. That includes the grain that we have out there that we keep in the, on the ground, as opposed to taking it somewhere else to go dump it. So we are on course to get to fifty percent. Yes.
And the commissioning. The extent to which we're using energy commissioning studies on our older buildings to know where the sustainability improvements can be best utilized.
Yes, what, what we're doing, there's something you call monetary-based commissioning, which is MBCX. We, it's like we are flying blindly with some buildings. We don't know how much energy we're using, so we're going to have metering of those buildings under this Prop Thirty-nine year two, so that we'll be able to know what building is using more energy and which building we need to have sensors to be able to turn off lights when you're not using it. So that is coming up this school year. But we took a survey to find out which building throughout the colleges uses most energy. So that is our next step. And, and I also want the board that, all of these activities would not have been possible without the help of Charles Neal. Charles? Okay. Please give him a hand. So he has been the champion, he's been the champion that made all of this happen.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just briefly, just a brief question. On the outreach, the festival and the Sustainability Conference that is put on yearly.
Yes.
It's always been very successful, but how can we increase the participation? Is, is there additional funds that need to be added to that, or resources? Because it appears to be a grand activity, and I would just like for us to make sure that the outreach is, is wider than, than what I've seen.
Yeah, we, your, your comment will be taken into consideration, and we planned the one for this school year. Last year, they, they did ask for a donation of about ten thousand that came from the Department of General Services, and we're going to solicit and have college presidents participate with us in that regard, and to be able to bring in more vendors and outreach to other communities within our market area to participate next year. So that is doable. And again, I commend Charles Neal for helping to take this to a new level compared to what we used to do. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a question from Trustee Oliver.
So, so currently, a few students at Lenny are drafting a proposal for, that will help the sustainability movement at the district to install bicycle repair stations at all four colleges and the district. How do you, how do you suggest the best way to give, submit the proposal? Should we go through the shared governing structure, or should we bring it to you or Mr. Neal?
Yeah, my, the Department of General Services, under my leadership, would be glad to meet with that committee and be able to give you ideas about how this can be brought about. And then we will take a recommendation to the Chancellor to be able to see that this is implemented. We want more folks to get off from the car and be able to ride bikes, and whatever avenue we can make that happen, we'll work with you.
Okay. One more question. When does the Sustainability Committee start meeting? Has it already met, or when is it going to start? Does anyone have a?
This is, there's the Chancellor Sustainability Committee that meets throughout the whole year. So I'm going to have Charles work with you to see how you can have more participation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just information. On the, on the bike repair, there are several high schools in the Bay Area that have bike repair services, so there might be some partnership that could, could happen. And I can pass that information on to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Moved by Trustee Galasa, seconded by Trustee Brown, and the, we're approving the consent calendar except items number fifteen and sixteen, who were pulled off of the, this agenda. It's been properly motioned and seconded. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item is an informational item only. Item number twenty-three is considered approval of the fiscal year 2014, 2015 Integrated Planning Budget and Development Calendar as your motion for approval. Moved by Trustee Galasa, is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Riley. Discussion, Trustee Oliver.
I have a question. How was this, this calendar formulated? Like, who created it? Is there any question on that? I mean, is there any answer for that? Who created the calendar?
Yeah, it's, it's created at Cabinet and myself. What we do is we take the prior year calendar dates and back, and start with the, the due dates from the state of California and work backwards so that we can integrate all of the planning that's needed to go into the budget development.
Okay. Because, I asked because I was wondering if any faculty, staff, or students had any input in this calendar, because I do see on October twenty-first, the college student equity plans are due, which is in about, what, three, four weeks? They're due to the board for approval. So were the colleges at least asked or given, allowed to give a recommendation, you know, when should they, when they should be able to submit that, if it's actually feasible to submit that to the board?
Do any of you have a response to that as it respects, I mean, it goes to the colleges?
The equity plans have been postponed for submission until January. My understanding, we're going to the board, we're going to the board in December, right? So this is allowing us time to take our plans through our own shared governance process and then back to the board before it goes to the state.
Because I do see on October twenty-first that it's for discussion and review, so is that, I mean, it's just for review?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's going to be altered.
Yeah.
So, I have one more question. So do you guys feel like faculty, staff, and students should be able to give recommendations on these dates, because these are plans that will affect each of those groups, because they are supposed to have, be allowed recommendations on those plans? Yes?
Chancellor, what's the process for student input into the calendar?
Faculty, staff, and students, just not students.
This is the first year that we've actually integrated all of the equity plans into the, the budget calendar. Normally, we just present the budget calendar for development through the PB, the PBC and that, and that calendar schedule. So this is the first time that we've actually integrated it all together, so as far as, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure what goes on at the campuses as far as their input for this.
We do have student representatives in all of our participatory committees, and so students do provide input during that process.
So tomorrow, for example, we have college council, and we have student representatives on college council, and I'll be presenting the Integrated Budget Planning Calendar for their review.
I'm not, I'm not asking like the presidents how they are going about getting recommendations from those group on these plans. I'm talking about this actual calendar itself that was created by the district.
I think I could respond.
I think it's an administrative function of like timelines that are, there's.
Exactly.
So we have to submit budgets to the state per, to hit different timelines, and so I think it's, a lot of the dates on here are backing out of those dates that were required to meet. I think that's how it's ultimately developed. It's geared by when we have to adopt our budget. It's geared to when we have to submit quarterly reports to the state. So I think this lays it out in, in a very public format. Trustee Gonzalez-Gian.
I think Trustees Oliver, Oliver's question is an important question, and it's not so much specifically about the, this particular budget document, but the budget process. And so maybe I can ask a more generalized question. What is the student role in shared governance on the campuses and in the district in the, in the creation of the college and district budgets? What is that process? Where do students actually plug into and have influence over the development and modification of budgets?
Well, we have a budget committee at the campuses, and we actively solicit student input. In fact, students are well represented on that committee. So that's part of that process, and that feeds into the college council as well, so they're represented there also.
So is that a, is the student representation on the, on the budget committee, an appointment from the associated students?
Absolutely.
Okay, and is that true for all campuses?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed?
I'd like my advisory vote to be recorded as a no, because faculty, staff, and students weren't allowed input on this actual calendar itself. That's what I'm referring to.
So the motion passes with student advisory vote. Oliver voting no. Next item is announcements.
October fifteenth, September fifteenth through October fifteenth, as we had heard from some of our student presentations, is the National Hispanic Heritage Month. So I just, in our closing, wanted to say that the Happy Hispanic Heritage Month, it's wonderful to live in a place like California and be in Peralta, where we get to really have such a rich calendar, as the students described, and it's, it's one of the benefits of this beautiful place that we live in. And the next regular board meeting will be held on October seventh in the district boardroom. Mr. President, that concludes, concludes the announcements for this evening.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other business before the board, this meeting is adjourned at nine fifty-two. Thank you. Have a good night.